okay I'm doing some reading um about um the enlightenment era about to jump into uh my reading for the rococo period of art uh which from what I understand based from the lecture that I uh read I'm sorry that I watched today the rococo period was basically um a part of the French Revolution era um it was it was a French style of art which makes sense because um when I think about French when I think about the French I think about um I might be talking too fast let me slow down when I think about the French I think about uh today what we view as like non-binary you know what I'm saying I think about this very I think about Lady Marmalade I think about things like that I think about this freedom that comes with being secretive sexy myster- mysterious and alluring and so the rococo period is introduced as this style of art that was created to pull art away from this idea and these ideas of religion and religious wars and religious conflicts and kerfuffles and you know back and forth and theories cause you know um we had the the Renaissance area era which was the rebirth that happened in Italy um I think primarily of Florence if my studying my studiousness serves me correctly but um we have the Renaissance which is the rebirth and it's called the rebirth mainly because um it was nothing new right um a lot of the Renaissance was just a continuation if you will of classical Greek and Roman art there's a lot of inspiration from that but at the time of the Renaissance the Renaissance artists in the Renaissance movement actually in my opinion was something that happened by accident and it's even said you know through my studies from what I've been understanding is that there are some art theorists and some art philosophers who don't even believe that the Renaissance even happened right they believe um that it was just a continuation of what was already done um oftentimes you'll see the words classical antiquity um associated with the Renaissance because again it was a rebirth that's literally what the word means a rebirth but the Renaissance was trying to pull art away from that Byzantine style of art uh that very heavily religious um kind of was created during the movement of the growth and emergence and the wide widely accepted um popularity of Christianity so when you when you see Byzantine art you've probably seen it it's kind of got that like mosaic towel look and um there's a lot of like halos that look like really big orange or yellowish circles or something to that extent when the Renaissance came around they were trying to pull art away from that super super religious look of art right and during this time this is when the Protestant uh Reformation happened I'm sorry the Catholic Reformation happened and that's what the entire Renaissance was all about it was saying hey you know art doesn't have to be so religious let's add some secularism to it let's make it more worldly right let's let's give people this 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 sense of belonging to religion rather than being separate from religion and needing to respect it as something separate in order to be a part of it why not just let people be a part of it so that's where you see like Michelangelo statue of David and uh the Last Supper that's been recreated so many times uh Leonardo da Vinci and Raphael and uh I can't remember his name is it Titian I think it is um I don't know why when I said that I thought about Tahitian tree but there we go uh Titian and um uh Michelangelo they all come from uh this era they're considered the Renaissance man uh more more so uh Michelangelo and Leonardo are the two that are primarily known as the Renaissance men as they were also very scientific and uh they they were involved in writing and philosophy they weren't just you know artists like we know them and they weren't just the Ninja Turtles you know what I'm saying shout out to Master Splinter but um no you know that that's what this whole entire movement was about um and if you go back and you look at that art uh that's where the Mona Lisa came from one of my favorite pieces from the Renaissance by Michelangelo was the uh the Last Judgment and if you look at the Last Judgment that piece of art kind of explains everything that I've been saying up until this point about the whole idea that they were trying to include people into this spiritual religious uh uh religion understanding saying hey you know the human they are part of the of the religion in the spiritual uh experience as well but the Catholic Church had a big problem with the fact that a lot of the uh art had lots of nudity um but a lot of that art during that time was not even commissioned or patroned um by the church it was commissioned and patroned by a very very wealthy family called the Medici's and they had a lot of political power and they couldn't be messed with like awesome for real for real they were just hard like that right so the artist which is what they are paid to do they give the person who's paying they give the client what they want right and the Medici family was heavily uh 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 invested in this type of art a lot of the chapels and uh churches and you know a lot of very infamous places have the Renaissance art in it and then um from the Renaissance we go into the Baroque period right where the Baroque period is continuing on with this religious war with this kerfuffle that's been going on since the Byzantine Empire um and or since the Byzantine art era but the Baroque and the Baroque actually means I think it means irregularly shaped pearl or something like that I don't know but the Baroque period takes place in Rome which I think is really fun for me being somebody who is a Christian and who studies Christianity because we know that a lot a lot of uh the New Testament especially during Paul's writings and Paul's philosophies took place during uh took place in Rome so the Baroque period comes along and remember I said during the Renaissance there was a Catholic ref- uh Catholic Reformation with the Protestants which are the branches of religion such as your Bab- your Baptist and um actually I'm gonna look it up while I'm saying it cause I don't remember them specifically but just note that they were branches um that came from the Catholic uh the Catholic Church uh the the Catholic Reformation also includes um Erasmus and uh Martin Luther who had his ninety-five uh thesis who basically was basically coming hard at the Catholic Church saying y'all are doing things in here that are not right you know uh uh the Renaissance era and I can respect it a lot um hold on I can respect it a lot because you know let's see okay so the Protestant were branches um the branches that came from the Protestant uh view of religion were the Baptists the Presbyterian and the uh Lutherans Lutheran Church okay so excuse me my bad with all that being said I can respect the Renaissance because they weren't attacking God they weren't attack they were not attacking people's religion they they weren't attacking any of that they were holding the people who said to have been chosen by God responsible for the things that they were doing that were corrupt like the Protestant I mean the Catholic Reformation was saying that in in Martin Luther's ninety-five thesis he was like y'all in here selling holy items for political power that's incorrect y'all not supposed to be doing it right okay so then we get into the Baroque period and the Baroque period comes in and now the church what is going on now the church is getting back involved with the commissioning and the patroning of art and I believe the Sistine Chapel let me see has a lot of Baroque art Sistine Chapel hold on yeah let's see okay so actually the Sistine Chapel it says here that it actually um had like a merging of the Renaissance and the Baroque art but just from my studies we looked at a lot of Baroque art in the Sistine uh chapel and the Baroque period comes along and this is where you get your I believe his name was Bernini or Bormi- or Bormini um he was prominent during that time there were a couple of other heavy hitters during that time as well but that's just the first one that comes to my mind um but they come in and they introduce um this very dramatic uh this very theatrical um this very just emotionally driven this emotionally drawing this emotional magnetism in art right and Catholics right are are patronizing this heavily and basically what the what happens during this time is that the Protestant rest- Reformation happens and so basically the Catholic Church is basically throwing the beef giving the smoke back to the Protestants saying well now wait a minute now right you know wait a minute we get what you're saying right okay fine you know you wanna include humans into the experience right but if you include humans into the religion or the spiritual experience they cannot be nude they cannot be naked right which you know in my art classes we are told that nude and naked are two totally different things so we tend to use nude when we're referring to the body without clothes right you can see the genitalia and all of the anatomies of the man and the woman right but um they basically say well no you know art is important uh cause I'm missing some context here but I just wanna keep from rambling too much because in the Renaissance we get the media and the print press that's how Martin Luther was able to uh print his thesis and get a lot of people thinking and get a lot of people to join you know the understanding of what it meant to be a Protestant and things of that nature and as time goes on people start to believe that art is less important than literature um and then the Baroque period comes around and says well no 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 actually art is important because most people can't read okay just because they we have a medium now that allows us to put our thoughts on paper and you know people can consume it uh through reading it everybody cannot read and so we need art so that way people can have an understanding of what it actually is that they believe in so they can actually kinda see what it looks like but the 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 Baroque period was basically challenging the Protestant in the Renaissance and the rebirth of all of this old classical antiquity and they were basically saying you cannot do art in this way or else people are going to start to praise the artist more than the art and that's gonna take them away from the religi- the religious and the spiritual aspect that's supposed to be the beauty of art right and to a certain extent that was kinda right if you think about present day you know there's a lot of people we we got stands and fans and what else you call whatever else you call them right navies and armies and all kinds of things right which prove what the Catholic was saying in the Protestant Reformation during the Baroque era to be true the art has to be a representation of the 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 uh the sacredness of religion and of God like you can't have folks in here nude like I get it like nude is natural so you wanna make the art more natural and include the humans because you don't feel like they should be separate from the religious experience but we need people to still be we need people to still reverence the religion with the art and not pull religion from the art and fall in love with the art so much that they start to worship or idolize the artist right so that's what the Baroque era is all about it's trying to take art back to this religion thing and 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 the Protestant Reformation happens during this time also um there was one other thing that I wanted to mention but I forgot but there's a lot of really good 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 art during the Baroque period actually between the two oh oh that's what it was so during the Renaissance era there was also a school of thought a lot of school of thoughts came out during that time but two of the most promised prominent were the humanist or the or humanism um and the Ecclesiastes which is basically talking about human you know uh human beings and how humans came into the world with this will to do good and the knowledge and the proverbs and the understanding of wisdom through uh experience and if you read the Bible all of this is concurrent all of this stuff is is all interconnected to each other right um but with the humanism with the school of humanism it was basically wanting to create this kind of civil collective right amongst the people to basically say you know um we should all have a certain level of sophistication as a group of people you know this shouldn't be anything that's separated um from society uh because as you continue to get into art especially when I'm I'm about to make mention of the rococo period which was really 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 big on having one authoritative type of dictatorship if that's even what you wanna call it where you know it was about heretic they believed that power was hereditary and you either got it through your genes or you didn't and so you let's hold off on that but nonetheless humanism comes along and there's this school of humanism um and it does become an art form within the Renaissance period it's kinda on the tail end of the Renaissance period going into the Baroque period but it didn't really inspire the Baroque period um humanism really came along because the artist who came after you know the Titian and Raphael and uh uh Leonardo da Vinci and Michelangelo they could not make art to the magnitude that these artists of the Renaissance did they they couldn't match the naturalism of it like that natural look to it so they kinda started to take pieces of the Renaissance inspiration and make it more illogical and just kinda collage a bunch of different things and and make things look imaginative or 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 what you would call uh mythological actually I think it's the birth of Venus it comes from the humanism school of art or the humanism uh thought um during the Renaissance period uh but it's actually it is not highlighted as its own art era I don't really know why but I know that it's included with schools of thought during the Renaissance period coupled also with the Ecclesiastes that believed you know hey everything should be together the thought was not the art not the art everything should be have its have a similar sophistication running across the board more ego to uh egotelic hold on let me just say it this way try to steer it away from utilitarianism which basically has this ideal has this philosophy that you know the rich excuse me will create the system and then essentially raise up or educate people or raise people to support the rich right humanism and the Ecclesiastes comes on and says no 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 actually it should be more I wish I could say it right I can't I'm kinda sleepy oh egalitarian I I'm saying ego the egalitarian where you know it's kinda this idea that uh let me see yeah it's 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 like an idea for all but anyhow so I'm saying all of that to basically go into what I'm studying tonight which is the rococo period and before we get into the before I get into the reading we have to read the introduction of the Enlightenment because I believe this is going to be uh imperative in the flow and going into what the rococo period was all about and the rococo period comes along and it says let's just do away with all of this religious stuff right like all of this religious back and forth let's just let's just think about this from the standpoint of that everything is just beautiful let's let's let art imitate life instead of letting art imitate religion or an idea of religion I also wanna make this uh point too because it's on mine uh there's a really nice statue of uh I believe it's Mother Teresa and an angel that is really really popular during the Baroque period uh there's also a statue of David uh by Bormini uh that was done during the Baroque period that's actually in my opinion better than the one about the Michelangelo but that just could be because between the Renaissance and the Baroque period I actually lean more towards the belief of the Baroque I believe you know I lean more towards the belief of a more prudent religious experience than a secular one but you know hey no need to dive into that rabbit hole um I'm just trying to name some of the um there was another one I can't think of it off the top of my head but for time let's just move on right but just get get some get some books watch some some movies watch some YouTube videos on Renaissance and the Baroque but rococo comes along and it's it's more heavily um uh adopted and promoted by the French and they say well let's uh we want art in our home you know what I'm saying Baroque period Renaissance period visiting you know all of that art was made for the church but we don't want no church religious pieces in our home which I mean you can't blame him right you know and yeah we gonna be you might wanna piece or two but overall you know you kinda want some stuff to make your home look homely you know so a lot of art commissioned during the rococo period actually to back up I think rococo means don't get me the line they told us what it means and I don't remember there's a particular there it go what does it mean in French it doesn't say I know that there's a that's not what it means oh pebble work that's what it is or shell work so like think of a rock or something to that extent but like the rococo period comes along and a lot of the people who commissioned art during the rococo period so we go from a very uh we go from a very very powerful political family the Medici family being the patrons of art with the Renaissance then we go to the church uh and the popes and the papacy being heavily being the patrons of the Baroque period and then we go to the rococo period where the kings and queens and you know these are the people who are the patrons of that particular art period and it makes sense because what the rococo period captures a lot is like I said the um the eroticism and the sexual freedom and the naughtiness and the just you know raunchiness and the secularism or the more secular I should I guess I should say a more worldly idea um of art like really digging into what I would consider a darker part of the human experience it's a little more immoral right because what it's doing is it's capturing the luxury the luxurious lifestyle of the uh aristocracy the aristocracy was just a small group of people who ran the country right you know they were separated from for the rest of so- from the rest of society but very celebrated and very uh uh the the you know I don't wanna say regular people but ordinary people you know they were very obsessed with the with the aristocratic um lifestyle which we see today in America you know celebrities now you don't necessarily have to be born into it it's not hereditary like it was back then during uh the rococo period but it was very um and I think the rococo period was like the seventeen seventeenth century eighteenth century Baroque period I know the Renaissance was the fourteen fifteenth and the sixteenth period the the Baroque period would have had to fallen anywhere between the sixteenth century and the seventeenth century because rococo takes over the seventeenth and eighteenth century but enlightenment is happening right like people or or the people that are commissioning this art the enlightenment had more to do with the fact that everything is not so much religious some things in life are scientific and mathematic and these are concepts that are concrete um and they are they are laws they are logical and you know you can have knowledge without having experience you can have knowledge in some s- uh philosophies um some people believe you could have knowledge without God which is where atheism comes from and in this study that I'm doing atheism is like really really associated with worldviews but nonetheless you get where I'm where I'm going with it um a lot of things were blurred during this time of the rococo period um it's even said that pink pastel pinks was a masculine color back then um a lot of the art one of the most infamous pi- uh paintings of the rococo period uh was the swing um and the swing is depicted as this woman uh swinging on a swing and there's you know big huge dress it's also said oh let me say this and there's a man at the bottom who is said to be her husband that's looking at under her dress so that's the most infamous piece of the rococo period and that should tell you what the rococo period was all about now it's also said that the rococo period was when the French colonizers came along and they like said like we said took what was meant for art in the Renaissance and the Baroque period and put their own spin on it that's why you see a lot of pale faced it a lot of um like porcelain looking pictures a lot of people don't like the rococo period but I actually find a lot of the art from the rococo period very pretty I I I find it very beautiful I find it very alluring and attractive and decorative and luxurious and that's what it was going for you know uh the rococo period was known well for the stucco and you know just the elaborateness of you know uh what used to be right it it kind of it is funny because the stucco was actually plastered or it was used um if you had skill you could use stucco to make it look like marble and then you would put that stucco on hollow wooden uh supportive like columns and things of that nature there's a library uh that was made with stucco it looks like marble but it could not have been marble because marble would have been too heavy on those wooden floors so they just basically took hollow wooden columns and put stucco on them and in one of the parts of the lecture that I was watching today it was saying that um it used to be that marble was very expensive and stucco was not as expensive because stucco is just a uh combination of different proportions of water chalk plastic and some other stuff right but you've probably seen stucco before um it just looks really thick white and like plastery right um but they say now it has switched it has been reversed because uh the art of being able to use stucco uh create uh you know require skill you have to know how to use stucco in order to make it look like marble whereas you can just go buy marble you know and have somebody sculpt it down um stucco now is more about labor stucco then was more about you know cheap as it related to access marble uh the accessibility to marble versus the creation or the accessibility to these cheap you know products that create stucco made marble marble more expensive back then but as time has gone on marble has become less expensive um than stucco because you actually need somebody who knows how to mix stucco and and uh put it together in order for it to look you know even remotely close to what stucco used to look like and what stucco used to do back then but I'm saying all of that to basically say um the rococo period sounds a lot like America today and how you know like I said the stucco was used to imitate marble and everything was so free and erotic and romantic and raunchy and all kinds of stuff like that right um but in all of that I was reading this uh piece here about enlightenment and it was breaking down the difference between just and Lex and just has more to do with rights like it is what it is and and the reason why I'm saying this is because I've also been studying the book of Psalms and um in the Bible and I'm reading about you know God being a just God and it says that right is just and that's a comprehensive idea of rights or a comprehensive um yeah idea of rights and then Lex which is the law is a branch within what is just but the law uh in most cases um is um let me see but the law hold on let's see here okay this is the best way to explain it natural rights it says that rights that are not dependent on laws so it's just right Natural rights, it says that rights that are not dependent on laws, so it's just right. Customs or beliefs of any particular culture or government and therefore um are universal and inalienable, we've heard that word before. Uh, rights that cannot be repealed or restrained by human law. Some, yet not all, see them as synonymous with human rights, okay, right? Um, and then natural law, remember, rights is justice. Law is, you know, for the Latin word, lex, it says the philosophy that certain rights so that certain justices or values are inherited by virtue of human nature and can be universally understood through human reason. Historically, it refers to the use of reason to analyze both social and personal human nature in order to deduce binding rules of moral behavior, the law of nature, like nature itself, is universal. So it's basically saying that your rights is everything, right? They don't depend on the law, it's just right, it's just just, like when we think about God, God is a just God, um he just is, God is is just, he's he's everything he that don't depend on the law, no custom or belief. Um, and it can't be, he, God cannot be repealed or restrained by a human law, right? So then when we get into the law, which is a branch of the rights, it is a philosophy, right, that certain rights, right, or values are inherent by virtue of human nature, means naturally this is what you should be able to do, right? It's a, it's something that is right and you just naturally can do it because of the virtues of human nature and can be universally understood through human reason, right? Think about the Ten Commandments, you have God who is a just God, who knows all things and nothing that God is or does can be can be repealed, can be repealed or restrained by human law, right? By our human nature, okay? It it reminds me of the Book of Job, but what it's saying is, is that, uh it can be universally understood through human reason, one of the Ten Commandments. Thou shall not commit adultery, is it's just understood, basic understanding. You shouldn't commit adultery. Now, there are other things um above that law that belong to justice and that belong to righteousness. But the law is, right, the thing that that is is uh understood and has value for the human nature, it's just that I don't care if you didn't know the Ten Commandments, you know you shouldn't be sleeping with nobody's wife or husband, right? So it says historically, uh, it refers to the use of reason to analyze both social and personal human nature. Okay, in order, so that's before we get that in order part, it said it it refers to the use of human I'm sorry, it it refers to the use of reason, so our ability to to think about this thing, right, to rationalize this thing. To be able to analyze, right, to to see things, to compare different things that all essentially say the same thing, but just in different subsets and different branches of it. So it allows us to think about a compilation of different things, both interconnected and and uh in in comparison with each other. To analyze, we're using that to to be able to think about our social and personal human nature, right? Social meaning society, meaning a collective, how we act, what's our human nature around people. If a person says something nice to you, right, from a social reason of analytic of of analysis, you would say I should assume that this person is a good person and say you're welcome back, right, that's that's social. And personal human nature, right, my personal human nature, just my personal knowing, right? Of what's good and what's bad, like I said, there's a righteousness, which is our natural rights that sit above the law, right? Natural rights, marriage, you know, I have the right to marry a man that I love. A man has a right to marry a woman that he loves. A man has a right to protect that woman, a woman has a right to nurture that man, but what do you do with all of this stuff, that's right, well, you give it a law, right? And that law says, do not commit adultery. Because these, there is all of these rights of, oh, y'all love each other, y'all wanna protect each other, y'all wanna nurture each other, all of that stuff is right. But in order for all of that stuff to remain just, all for all of that stuff to remain right, here is a law that keeps that, here we go, in order to deduce binding rule, excuse me, to deduce binding rules of moral behavior, deduce, another word for reason, but deduce mean bringing it down to the basic. Bring it down. When we say reason, we're eh there's there's some things going on here, we may be having one or two or three thought thoughts at the same time, trying to come up with the conclusion or trying to deduce. Trying to take those three thoughts and bring it down to what it is, right? And we say that it deduces i- in order to deduce binding rules of more behavior, going back to the example, there's all of this natural right. It has nothing to do with me, I'm a woman. Naturally, I will love a man, I will wanna nurture that man and have his children, et cetera. Naturally, he's a man, he's going to want to protect his wife and lead his his children and his family and his household and he's going to want to love on that woman, these are all of these natural rights that just come with us. And so then we get a natural law that says, well, if that is the truth, then we should not step outside of our marriage and and people who don't or who are not even a part of this marriage should know that they should not come in and defile this marriage, that's the law. And we have that so that way we can come down to a conclusion, be drawn to a conclusion that binds us to moral behavior. Rules, ru- the things that are here, right, it says follow this, the rule is follow the law. Right, to keep natural rights just. And I just wanted to break that down because in in this in this teaching of enlightenment, there's a lot of different terms being thrown around and during this time of enlightenment, this enlightenment is actually steering away from religion, right? There's 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 some traces of religion in it, but where what I would consider um empiricism. And it's basically saying that you cannot have knowledge without an experience, right, you have some people that solely believe in empiricism, then you have some people who solely believe in logic and scientific uh understanding of things and they say you don't need the experience to have knowledge because uh eh I think it was Renee uh uh Descartes who says, uh, cogito ergo sum, I think therefore I am, saying that in order for knowledge to come upon me, I have to think it so that way it can come and be. Right, I have to think that I am a whatever in order to be a whatever, right? Which I was in the kitchen earlier today and I was thinking about that, I was like, this is where all this trans movement stuff is getting all whirl hurled and stuff, um because honestly, in my opinion, uh I agree more with Emmanuel Kant who says you need empiricism and you need logic, you need rationalism and empiricism, I wasn't saying it right earlier, but you need rational, Rene Descartes says it's all about rationalism, right? Emmanuel Kant says, no, it's about empiricism and rationalism because you can't have one without the other. And I agree with that, right, uh because even Emmanuel Kant says, you know, there are limits to rationalism. Because rationalism will present as if it knows things that it doesn't know anything about. Example, God, you cannot rationalize God, so therefore for somebody to have knowledge about God, they have to have empiricism, they have to experience things that put them in front of a situation that makes them call on God. God answer them and by the mysterious working wonders of God, something happens that make them say logic could not have reasoned that. Rationalism could not have rationalized that, right? Um, and so I'm learning that the Enlightenment period was was focused heavily more on thought, right, people just wanted to be able to think for themselves. Which is fine, I I feel like that's fine, but I think when you allow people to think for themselves, I think when I was reading this, I was thinking about the the Church of Scientology, right? And how, I think was it, the lady who was on the King of Queens, I think it was, uh, I don't remember her name. But I think she was heavily involved and uh she she left it because again, like Emmanuel Kant said, your rationalism, your your ability to think with the consciousness, it can only go so far, it can only go so far. And then, you know, um Renee uh says that well, you know, all of these things already exist, such as like math and science and things like that, and you don't have, you need an experience for that concrete knowledge, well, somebody had to have an experience in order for there to be concrete knowledge, I think essentially what Renee is saying is that there is just some evidence. Uh, you know, there's just some logic that is so evident that it's been evident and it continues to be evident and it has been proven true. And so it's already there and it is existing for you and you can have that without going through experience, yeah, but in order for that to be there, somebody had to experience it, literally, science requires experiments to prove that it is true. So, um, going back to what I was saying, uh Leah Rimney, I think it was her name. Well, I think it was her, I think she was in Scientology. Leah Rim, yep, Scientology and the Aftermath, I vaguely remember that. But, you know, during my, oh, my session ran out, during my time, you know, I've seen Scientology, but um then as kind of enlightenment kind of continues on and we get into the Rococo period of art and you know, we we start to understand like legal rights with ha- which has more to do with the systematic um idea of what is right, somebody made it up, somebody said this is was right, these are the rules and and these can be repealed um and restrained by human laws, right? Like I said, you have the natural rights, you have the natural law and then you have the social contract theory, which is one of my favorite uh things, uh or one of my favorite ideas of politics in my opinion, and it says in moral and political philosophy, a theory or model originating during the age of enlightenment that typically addresses the questions of the origin of society and the legitimacy of the authority of the state over the individual. Uh, it typically posits or positions that individuals have consented either explicitly or tactically to surrender some of their freedoms and submit to the authority of the ruler or magistrate or to the decision of the majority, which is voting uh in exchange for protection in their remaining rights. Uh, so it's it's social contract, who was, who was over the social contract? I gotta check now, I think it was Rizzo. Who had the social contract, who? I'm gonna say invented cause I can't think of another word, social contract, I think it was John something Rizzo, something, that sounds about right. Oh, I'm all the way wrong. Thomas Hobbes, where did I get Rizzo from? I don't know. It says John Locke, oh, that's it, yeah, 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 John Locke. Anyway, but that's really all I wanted to come on here and say, I really just wanted to talk about the just and the lex, the right and the law, the righteousness over or superseding law, uh but how law is still uh something that is uh just as concrete and unshakable as rights. But laws come from rights and rights are things that cannot be taken away from us. Just like laws are things that cannot be taken away from us, especially if it's a natural law. Um, but this 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 era of enlightenment is what get gave us our introduction into what was about to happen with the Rococo period, so yeah.